Reconciled and just worked on the midyear review last couple of weeks. So, that's it. Nothing else.
Good.
Any questions? Electric Phil, back up.
I got in trouble for doing that one. Remember. So, I passed out the second quarter tree report for this year. Does anybody have any questions on that? They're, they're out on the rule lines and then you'll start seeing them move back into town. So, that should be coming up pretty soon.
Out of curiosity, does the second half of the year present a larger chunk of maintenance than the first half of the year or?
No, because we're really getting in pretty good shape on the trimming.
Sure.
So, she's going around basically doing the second round on the system and so, and we just work out a budget. We have a certain amount of money we work with.
Sure, okay.
Like, she comes in, plans work, how it works. I don't know if anybody's explained to you, but she'll come in and plan the work and then the crews will come in and knock a bunch out and then they'll go to another utility. So, it's just kind of on their schedule whenever they get back.
Sure.
So, we've assisted PJ one day with line truck and a couple of guys who worked for our treatment plant. We made preparations for the hot dog festival and then after the festival's over, we took it all back apart. One line crew's been on Alhambra Avenue assisting AT&amp;T on poles that they own, but we are, we are also on them. And then, last Thursday evening, there's a car accident on West Armstrong Road. So, we had a crew out there for three or four hours. We're still got a crew up east on Thousand East changing out poles and doing routine maintenance. Darren's been updating our silversmith, going around with silver smith to every pole on the system and updating all the hardware that's on it. And just been doing underground services and haven't had much trouble calls, so we're not going to look for that.
They're not.
Not going to look for that. Thank God the heat's broke finally for a little while.
Did you have a pole down or busted in an alley last night between Washington and Clinton?
Yeah, that was an AT&amp;T pole and they don't know the difference and so, they called it in and the trouble guy went down and got him straightened around. I contacted AT&amp;T this morning.
Perfect.
It sounded like a hostile environment when he was there.
Yes, correct.
That's all I got.
Shane, you got anything tonight?
Most everything's going well. Since the two email outages we experienced, I've been working on trying to keep computer desktop clients connected to email. I've got two especially for the city I'm battling, trying to keep them connected. But, yeah, it seems like each day I get another call back that there's another one not connected and I go out and I've just about got a repeatable procedure I use at this point to get them back connected again, but it involves taking everything off as far as email goes and rebuilding it all back again. So, it'll take some time. I'm also trying to figure out why it's happening and so, I can get that resolved and get the whole thing behind me. Other than that, like I said, most everything else working pretty good.
I have a related question, if I may. And maybe this goes on the open items list, Mike, I'm not sure, but several meetings ago, we, we talked about, we have a number of, I'll say users who choose to not manage their email password properly and allow it to expire and then require help to get logged back on. We talked about that in a meeting or two. As I recall, we left it that there would be some administrative guidance provided. And I wonder, do you know, or maybe Todd knows, has, has that been done? Are we, have we informed people that we really want you to do this?
Since the utility board directed the department heads to say something to their staff, that number has gone down to maybe once every two weeks. That number severely dropped since you told everybody to let their people know.
And, and how many users are not employees of the utilities? City, fire, police?
I mean, like literally, that number has gone down to maybe one or two people every two weeks, all, all across the board. I'm, I'm not getting those calls like I did before.
Do, do we know if that request was communicated to the city or?
I mean, to my knowledge it was because that number went down. I mean, it.
It was, I can speak to that.
It, it looked.
It's a, it's an overly complicated and cumbersome process that's, I don't understand why we have to change that often, but that, that would be my only comment on it as someone who's used it for years. That's, and it, and it deters people from wanting to use their city emails because of that.
I have to double check with ACCS, but I was believing it was matched to what we have at the utilities, which is 180 days.
Yeah. Yeah, when I was, so the county, we had the same, I think the same outfit and we never had to change our email. So, I don't know why that discrepancy is there and.
The thought process is rotating passwords, so if your passwords get hacked, you're not using the same one you've been for years and that.
Yeah, I understand that, but.
So, we, our situation is much improved. We, we did take some communication action.
I can only presume that it was because like I said, that number severely dropped. It's next, it's almost nothing now.
Unless we're just at that stretch where they're good and then we get a bombardment or you get a bombardment.
I'll send them to you now, Todd.
Okay.
Okay, can, can we, could you provide a update to the board in a month or two as to how that's going? Would that, would that be fair?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
PJ, I guess you're up next.
So, the guys at the plant have been servicing mixers. We also have a filter repair that's being made right now. All the cranes were inspected at the plant and we've spent quite a bit of time repairing the aerators at the lagoons, but I, I think they're all working for now. The maintenance guys, we've had, we only had two sewer calls, one on us, one on the property owner. We did a sanitary repair on Boone, storm project on Magnolia. We finished storm project on Second Street. We had a storm repair on Morrison and Pratt, repair catch basin on Tiger and Prairie and we did storm repair on North Kelly Avenue. We've been busy.
Sounds like it.
That's all I got.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anything else on the lagoon?
Oh, lagoon. Taking a look at the, at the budget, the mid, mid-year budget review data, let me rescind my request for the transfer of the extra $5,000 of funding to this year's account. We're in pretty good shape financially and for various reasons, we don't, it doesn't look like we're going to spend more than we have available. So, let's wait until we actually find out we need to, to do that. If, if, if we do, we'll, we'll discuss it at that time if that's okay to everyone.
Makes sense to me.
Thank you.
Makes lots of sense.
Thank you.
Okay, Todd?
Okay, I'm going to cover a couple of things for Chase first, Mike. The, they started doing some work over on the Armstrong Street project for, for water. They moved equipment and stuff in last week, a lot of their equipment, some of it's staying there, but some of the equipment and odds and end material and everything they're storing out at the water plant since they're just down the road. But, I think, I know they were out dumping some stuff at PJ's from their, when they're potholing and things like that today. So, that project's under, underway there, which will be good. The other thing is, is Chase had these numbers together and it's about our capacities that we've been pumping at the water plant. And our capacity is rated at nine million gallons a day, but we, we're under something called a firm capacity that in case a filter or a high service pump or anything like that goes down, if that's the case, we have a firm capacity of 7.2 million. But, he's done some num, he ran some numbers for 18-month averages. So, in the last 18 months, we're averaging 3.78 million gallons a day. And our highest monthly average was August of 2024, which is 3.908 million. So, we're, we're just a little over half of what our firm capacity is at this point in time. The, the highest three-day, or the highest gallons per day in the last 18 months was September 26th of 2024 of 4.585 million, July 2nd of 24 of 4.4 million and July 24th of 24 at 4.3 million. So, we hover right around that, you know, like I said, just a little over half of what our firm capacity is. And with our five largest customers, they are averaging 2.065417 gallons per day. So, there's a lot of water pumping through our plants, a lot of good water.
So, that's good information to have because lately, I'm sure a lot of you've seen, there's been a lot of misrepresented facts and information regarding our local aquifer and our utility capacity on social media. I think it's really important for people to know that. So, I'm glad that you and Chase brought that up tonight and, you know, I'm a firm believer in, I don't know what we're saving that capacity for. I mean, I think you folks, before I started on this board, you folks took measures to make sure we had that capacity so that development could occur. So, there's really no reason to balk at or fear additional usage when we have that capacity built in.
Right. And while we, last year when we were looking at doing, doing something for a neighbor community, we done an aquifer study.
I remember that.
Of what we have. We paid for it, it was on us and there is, I'm not going to give a firm number right now, but there is a lot of water that we're sitting on out there that is untouched at this point in time and that's gallons per day, same, just as what we report everything in as gallons per day.
And I think the other thing, not to get too deep into the weeds, but I think the other thing that's important for people to understand is aquifers don't contain a finite amount of water.
No.
That water is continually replenished.
Yes, and we sit on two of them.
Which is why you can.
Just keep pumping.
Pump four million gallons of water a day out there for perpetuity.
Yeah, and we, go ahead, Josh, I'm sorry.
No, I just, I just think it's important for us to drive these facts home as opposed to so many of the naysayers and folks that are decision makers who are involved making statements otherwise or making posts on social media otherwise that, hey, so-and-so said in Murfreesboro, Arizona, they're, they've got a desert in their front yard now because somebody built a factory.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so, facts are important.
Yeah, and with our aquifers, we're on two of them. One's around 160 foot deep and the other one's around 300 foot deep. So, we're, we're in both of those. We have multiple wells in both of those, but there is, we have the, the ability or the capabilities of a lot more water than what we actually are with our current firm capacity that we can pump right now.
Can I, can I make a related comment?
Yes, sir.
Follow up to Josh. I, I think Josh, your comments are well, well-spoken, well, well-grounded. I'll give you my perspective. I've been involved in the term engineering since 1973 professionally. I've spoken with Todd recently and, and what I recommend the board does, and I would offer to lead this effort and I'm, I'm already engaged in it, is a couple of things. Recognize as board members that there are individuals both in our community and worldwide who can post on social media and they do, that some of those folks are conveying horror stories and providing links and oh my gosh, what are we doing here in Frankfurt, Indiana? And the engineer in me suggests that we should not have a, an emotional response, but we should have a due diligence, engineering-based response based on the facts. So, I've talked to Todd, that is what Todd and I agreed, that we would formulate a due diligence evaluation. And of course, that begins with understanding what are the utility needs of a developer or a site developer or a business? How much water per day on the low and high end would they project that they might need near-term, five years, 10 years out? Starting with that number, we can play that against our existing capacity and as Todd said here, we're running approximately 50% of our allowed capacity that are, are design limits for our system in terms of water supply. And that's where we want to be to foster future development, whether it be industrial, commercial, residential, right? We want to be plenty of water available, no question, and it's also very high-quality water, some of the highest quality water in Indiana, right? And that's, a lot of that is based on our location being over two different aquifers that are known for the high-quality water that they, they contain. Now, in the same way, we can look at electric, we can look at wastewater treatment, effluent flow, how much wastewater can we treat per day? How much will the development site be producing per day? And in my experience, you can't really win a conversation with some of these folks on social media. And I'll, I'll acknowledge that many of them might be well-intended and they might be, they might have the interest of our community at heart, but they also may be misinformed and just repeating what they're hearing. And, and to me, it's kind of a circular argument. If you see someone on social media say, well, these five other communities in Indiana, there was so much social media pushback that they stopped the development of, let's say, a data center and they cite that as reasons we should stop the development of a data center, to me, that makes no sense at all. That's a circular argument, right?
Could not agree more with that.
We'll, we'll, we'll bring this back to the board when we get more due diligence under our belt and it would be my intent as a board member that, that we can review that data, that, that due diligence analysis and then we can publish somewhat of a case study or update on what's our situation here in Frankfurt? How much of our utility usage would this development be projected to take, require? And then we can go forward from there. But I, I see no, we're not even close to any limitations there and I think there's other, my last comment would be, there's other aspects about, some might call, some might call utility operations or availability that have nothing to do with this board. Light pollution, noise pollution, we, we don't govern any of that stuff, right?
Right.
We can, groundwater contamination, EPA, you know, environmental contamination. So, those are things that are outside of our purview and, and we can simply say so that, that the Indiana Department Environmental Management and the federal EPA manage this type of contamination and containment. And this is how this is done at the county level, so our light pollution, there's a county ordinance and on and on. So, I think we can kind of parse out these fears that some of our social media friends have posted and indirectly address them with more on the facts side, if that's agreeable to everyone.
Very much so.
Okay. Yep. I'm glad you brought it up because we, we hadn't really talked about that or acknowledged it, but it, it needs to be said at this point. Some, some folks seem to have limitless energy when they come to posting things on social media and I don't myself, so just acknowledge all that.
I just remember when Frito Lay was in, in Coming to Town and, or that was, there was, they were the unknown developer at the time and one of the big questions everybody had was, what are they going to, you know, they're going to use a lot of water, what are you going to do? Well, the board and, and when I got on the board, I forget how long ago it was, but that's when we started the idea of improving the water system, improving the, the sanitary sewer systems, the, the, we had done kind of a makeshift addition to the sewage treatment plant and it didn't, it wasn't enough, it wasn't enough done, so we, we, through the people that were working there, all this stuff's been put in place for just this time. And if we don't use it, then, then that's bad on us because we, we made those investments with bonds and all those kind of things for this time where we can have people using 60% of our capacity at the water treatment and 60, 70% of our water and, and getting the revenue that comes from that to help us keep financing. So, that's my statement on that.
Can I add one more comment, Mike? That's good. How many folks in the board, when I mentioned the town of Glicksburg, Indiana, raise your hand if you know where that is? So.
I didn't know there was such a place.
In 1860, there was a town named Glicksburg, Indiana. It was in Clinton County. There were citizens there that primarily were farmers at the time in 1860 and they wrote in the history books and recorded at the time that they saw no need for these things called railroads to cut across their farmland. They could get grain to market just fine in their horse-drawn wagon and the, the local mill was only less than a half a day one way away from their farm. And these mills were located every six miles apart because that's how far they could take their grain using horse and buggy. So, why would we need railroads? There's no future in it, it's temporary.
Yes.
Well, history's proven them wrong and for those of you interested in Glicksburg, Indiana, that currently is now known as Mulberry, Indiana, same town. So, history repeats and, and data centers are the newest worry point that some people are reacting to and I think there's, there's plenty of reasons to not react in that manner. So, we'll, we'll come back with some facts and share with the board and then we'll go public with it at that time. So, and I appreciate Todd for the discussion he and I have had and I didn't want to get in front of that as, as terms of a board member, but I felt the need to have a conversation with Todd a couple of weeks ago when this kind of all blew up. So, thank you for that, that's my, end of my comment here. Thank you.
Well, Rick, one thing you'd mentioned about that we have good quality water, you forgot the word that, that we have also inexpensive water too.
And how inexpensive is that water comparatively?
We're, the only place in the area around us is Tipton that is lower than us and everybody else, most, some people even double, triple our price at this point.
So, you're, you're telling me there are seven or eight comparable communities in our region of Indiana that are higher than our rates and one is lower?
Just one and it's barely lower.
So, we're in the lowest 12 percentile of the rates.
Actually, last thing I've seen, we're probably in the lowest, lowest 2% percentile in the state of Indiana.
Across the state?
Across the state.
Okay, well, to our credit.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And that information is readily available in the 2024 annual report published by the city of Frankfurt, available at Old Stoney if anyone would like a copy.
Okay, we have the council meeting next week on the EMA sale of the 69 line, 69 KV line, sorry. And with the contract extension, in what I had done, all the handouts that I emailed to all of you, I made printed copies, took them to Carol, dropped them off there Friday and she's, you got budget hearings tomorrow, correct? She's going to pass them out to all the council members tomorrow so that they have them a good, well, six days in advance to look at everything so that they'll have, if they have any questions or anything, we can cover them when we're there. But they have the exact same thing that, that you all looked at as well, so. And Carol asked me if I, she needed to put anything on there, I told her you'd be getting a hold of her on the agenda.
Yes, I will have everything to Carol for the agenda. I was hoping to email that out today, I didn't get it, but I will do it tomorrow.
Yeah, I was texting her when we were sitting here, I just told her you'd be getting with her, so, okay.
So, Todd, can I, can I ask if you should hear anything, questions or concerns back from any of the counselors? Could you please share the board?
Absolutely.
At the time, so we're prepared to help with the response and explain, explanation.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The other thing, I still am having discussions with the data center in the last two weeks. Obviously, they have calmed down some. Last week was much better than the, than the two previous weeks, I would say.
Better get to knock.
Yeah, I got a knock on wood like Phil was, but there are, there are still discussions going on and I know right now I've been receiving, fortunately, they've been, some of the questions and stuff have been going straight to EMA for these guys, but I'm copied on everything and there's no conversation going on behind my back, so I, I am aware of all those. But it has slowed down a little bit, thank goodness. Then, what was it, Phil? It was a week ago, last Thursday was when we had a meeting with a potential new developer also out of 65 and 28 south of NHK where they do want our sewer and water and they are, majority of the facility is in the, in our electric territory. So, we started discussions there and it's another pretty good-sized investment at this point in time if they pull everything off. And it's been talked about for what, year and a half, two years, probably Josh as well?
Well, at least.
But it's, from my impression and Phil was in the room with me, it sounds like it's going to be happening, so, and it'll be good. I think it'll be good for the community. I don't know if I'm entitled to say, I'll tell you off the record what it is, but it's a, it's a good, it's a good electric user, good water user and very little wastewater user. So, we're gonna, hopefully we get that and we were supposed to have information last Monday or Tuesday and we did not get it, so we'll, we'll wait and see so that we can decide how big of a, a substation that they're going to have to put in. It'll be on them because it'll be the only thing being serviced by that. And I did get a price from Craig on that.
So, hearing, hearing that, can I offer a comment?
Yes, sir.
And this pertains to my good friend, our county economic director, Shan Sheridan. For, for any folks that may be watching this meeting live or watching it recorded or archived, there is a standard process in the state of Indiana and many other states for how economic development gets done, what does the process look like? And unlike what some people in the public seem to expect, there, there is not an announcement broadly to everyone who lives in a county that this developer's coming here and spending this much of an investment and these many jobs and will use this many. this much of an investment and these many jobs, and will use this many utilities, that doesn't happen that way ever. There is a stepwise process, and I would refer anyone who wants to know more about what that process is to Shan Sheridan at the Chamber of Commerce as the Economic Development Director, and he can easily explain that the stepwise process involves local elected and appointed leaders. We are appointed, our county and city counselors, and the mayor and the county commissioners are elected, so it's a combination of both. There is a due diligence process, there's a question and answer process. So before everybody gets riled up about the next new development across 65, and we start seeing that on social media, I hope everyone takes a deep breath and goes and talks to Shan Sheridan in person and says, tell me about this development process, I don't seem to know how this is supposed to unfold. And I think that'd be a good educational opportunity for those people who might be concerned, so thank you.
Like I mentioned, it's been, it's been talked about, we did some research, it's been a while ago, at least, probably, like I said, 18 months, two years ago. And then when they reached out the other day, I think they got ahold of Phil, and then Phil and I called the guy, I had to take two deep breaths, because I was, this other one had been wearing me out, and I thought, oh, this is just what we need right now. But they were, they were good people, there was five of them came up and talked to us a week ago Thursday, and looked real promising.
And this process I'm referring to, it's not our role here in the board to explain it, so I'm not going to try, but it's out of necessity to provide the environment for economic development to occur. And if you look at it from the backside, if, if we were to do otherwise, and all of these contacts were to be made public from day one, and everyone who can post on social media would jump in with their opinions, I would say we would quickly, we would quickly rescind ourselves to the 51st state of the union in terms of economic development.
Well, you know, there's a
It's not possible if you don't do it in a methodical manner.
And there's a lot of times NDAs were required, and non-disclosure agreements, and surprisingly, on either one of these, we've had to sign anything at this point.
So, so again, it's not out of disrespect or not wanting to serve the public interest, it's because of the nature of the stepwise process that Indiana and other states use, and we subscribe to that. So I wanted to get that in there, thank you.
The other thing I had, I may be jumping around here a little bit while I'm, but I'm doing it while I'm up here, is if you, if you had any discussions on the budgets, and you got them all updated and everything, I went through and made notes on there, and, you know, to be honest with you, I'm, I'm really pleased at this point in time. I don't know about you all, but if there's any questions that you had, I think I could, I explained everything, and some of them did get pretty redundant, but when you're sitting at 50%, if that would have been, you know, for instance, on the auditor, if that would have been 50.01, it would be green, you know, so, but anything with a red line, I answered on where we're at in the situation, but as I've told a couple people today, I will be surprised if you see more than 12 of these in red by the end of the year, when the year ends, and, but if they're due, we will have good researched explanations on, on why they are that way.
And when you say more than 12 of these, you're referring to more than 12 accounts?
Yes, throughout, throughout the thing.
Out of hundreds of accounts?
Yes.
Not more than 12, or a very low percentage?
Yes, very low.
And I would, my reply would be, if it was anything less than that, or zero, we're not doing our job because we're being too conservative, so there's got to be some
Oh, there's going to be some, yeah.
Allowance there, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But it's being every, all, everybody is watching this and keeping, keeping their minds on it and looking at it, but for where we're at right now, this time of year, and what we've been through, and some of the departments, it's, I really do think that it's, it's, they're pretty good.
Some's out of our control with storms.
Storms.
Power outages, rains, rain events, we couldn't see those last fall when we were going through making the budgets out.
No, and it's, it's really, I'm pretty proud of all the work that people have put in, the amount of work that's gone in to keep these as, as good as they are at this Okay, can I keep jumping on your agenda, Mike?
Keep going.
Okay, all right. One of these may have to wait until the new business, but on the, the parking lot thing, it's about costing, and I've been doing some, well, I have electrics, and I have an example here for everybody, I'll pass them around. And real, what we do not have is the same format for sewer maintenance, if we're going to be doing a tap, anything like that, we have tap fees, but if we have to do a time and material, we don't have this. Did I give you enough?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Might have an extra one or two.
But we're gonna, we're gonna get in and model the other two departments for water and wastewater, or water and sewer maintenance, wastewater really would be out of it, to do a similar thing to this, and this, these things are updated with, if our material prices change up here, where you like, where you see a 35.3 pole, we can get new prices and put them in there, and then the, if you want, I can get you the, the background of this, of the multipliers and everything else that we're doing, but this is actually how we do our costing in electric. The labor is updated every year with increases, so we have that. And then the trucks, we have to go, we go with the FEMA standards on the truck cost, but we get all this in there when, when we do our pricing and everything. But I will come back at a later date, but I wanted to let you know at least as part of it, since it's on the, on the parking lot list of where we're at with that.
Comments or questions? This is outstanding.
Oh, some of these get long.
So we're going to leave this topic on the parking lot list for further discussion.
Yes.
And I should, I should mention, I'm, I'm not going through my second or third midlife crisis, I'm wearing sunglasses because I had my eyes dilated due to an eye visit today down in Carmel, Indiana, so I'm not trying to be cool.
You're not trying a new look?
No, no.
Well, we were wondering, Rick.
Yeah, I should have mentioned that earlier, because I'm sure you were, yeah.
I was going to wear, I was going to go to the car and get mine, but good. You're not Ray Charles then, right?
No.
Okay.
Got anything else on your?
Yeah, what the heck.
Keep going.
I know there's going to be some discussion here about our website after bit, and one of the things that we ran into, and I spoke with, with Rick about this the other day before him and Mike met, we get a lot of people, at least one, if not two, a week will come up here because they think that they're signing up for electric, and not all the utilities. So we, then they get disturbed when they're told that they have to go over to the billing office, you know, like why, and then they get there and they get all their utilities. So I got with Karen and told her what I was looking for, and then she put this together, but once we figure out what we're doing with the website, I would like to get this on there. And then actually, next week, I've been asked to speak at the, the Renters Association in a meeting that they're having, why they picked me, don't ask. But if, if you guys look at this and could give me some feedback or anything, I also want to take this and pass this out to the big renters in town, so that they have a copy to give to their tenants when they come in, because that's probably 90% of the people that are coming in here. And then I'm, I also want to go as far as go around to some of the realtors that are in town, give them a copy of this, they can explain to what's going on, how, what, you know, this has all the documents that they need to get either if they rent a house or rent a place, or if they're buying a place, and what's required, so I just want to throw that out, there's information to help out really our ratepayers at this point in time that are coming, new coming into town.
Like this, do we have a secondary sheet that's bilingual?
We can.
I think you
We can in the back, good point, Mike.
I think that would be an excellent option.
Yes, yes.
Just
Yeah, we could just do it on the back, like we do other things with that.
I think it'd be great.
Okay.
Could I ask one more question? Maybe it's me, I have a notoriously difficult time finding paperwork, so could you email this to the board?
Yeah.
So that I could, if necessary, I could do a markup with edits and share it with everyone?
Yeah.
And we can kind of get it maybe fine-tuned before we translate the initial version?
Yes.
Well, that, and if you're okay with it, I'd love to turn it into a social media graphic slash post that we could post on a semi-regular basis as content for utilities, because obviously it can help fill the gaps of times when we may not have a lot of other things to talk about, but it's a good reminder for people of where to go.
Yeah, and what people are doing, I believe, they're, they're just Googling electric company, or Frankfurt's Electric Company, and they get sent out here.
Exactly.
This way, if I can get it in the right hands and everything, then they can pass it out and say, hey, you need to do this, so.
Well, and it might be, I, I know that we have, and not to get too in the weeds here, but I know we have a Google Maps unclaimed listing for this facility. It's unmanaged, it's unupdated. One thing that we can do is, is make sure, first of all, that both are claimed and updated like they would be for social media profiles as well as a website, and then we can control the information that people find when Google does give them this building, and all it says is City Light and Power, and there's nothing else about it other than a phone number, and if we claim it as a business and set it up as a business, we'd be able to put some additional information in that, which also might help with some of that confusion.
Okay.
Anything to, to help out.
Yeah.
And it's mostly to help the aggravation of the people that are going to be our customers.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And stuff, so, okay, I'm done.
You're done?
I hope so.
You're done, all right.
Lot of information, Todd.
We're at the point of the approval of claims, payroll, and transfers. You had those to look at ahead, entertain a motion for any, any part of that.
I'll make a motion we approve claims.
Second that.
Have a motion to approve the claims, payroll, and transfers. Andrew, go ahead.
Krista Stowell?
Aye.
Rick Gunyon?
Aye.
Josh Uetz?
Aye.
Mike Reeder?
Aye.
Mike Kelly?
Aye.
I want to, I want to go, I want to jump to the social media, Rick, just, and that kind of thing, because I want to share some of, Rick and I's been looking at some of that, and we've decided we have two different things we need to look at this, why, and Rick, chime in if I don't get the right things here. On our, on the website, we feel we need the general information that's necessary to be distributed, and, and this kind of thing that he just gave us is one of them. For the Frankfurt Municipal Utilities, and then for Frankfurt Municipal Electric, we need the specific kind of things on the website that are necessary, maybe the, you know, some, maybe some background on how much, what the capacities of the electric units are, and, and just general information. But a lot of the things that, that, on the social, on the website should be, they're, they're going to be pretty much the same most of the time. But then on the social media part, on the, on the, those areas are the things that are current, you know, suddenly, the Green Street's going to be shut down because we have a water main break there.
Right.
Uh, the, there's going to be a meeting of the Utility Service Board on Monday night. Now, on the website, we have that there, there's a meeting on Monday nights, first and third Monday nights, except for holidays, but that there's a, that there's a meeting on August 4th, and these maybe even have the agenda and topics be on there then, because that's, that's something that is, is current, needs to be taken care of, can be looked at right away, if, and that's, so Rick and I, we looked at the, when you bring up the electric, the kind of things that are on there, some of it needs to be updated, and, and so those are the things we looked at, and now putting it into a process for getting it done is another thing, but it is, is kind of what we looked at. Rick, go ahead.
Well, that's a good overview, Mike, thank you. So using my words, there's, there's generally, we agreed, there's two classes of information. Information that doesn't change often or rarely would be on the utility website page of the city of Frankfurt. It would be things like the three classes of service we provide for electric users, the rates that are approved by city council, the high-level information, again, that does not change frequently, contact information and so forth, addresses and this and that. At a lower level, information that is expected to change more frequently, and information that pertains to our, our user group, our ratepayers, would be on Frankfurt Municipal Utilities Facebook pages. And further discussion with Todd today, I'd like to ask Todd to kind of sort out and recommend back to the board how he'd like to do this, but potentially, we discussed each of the departments having their own Facebook page, and that gives them ownership and content, what we'll call it, attentiveness. That would be a benefit of that, but most importantly, you know, some of our utilities solely attend to ratepayers within the city limits, and stormwater fees are one such utility, stormwater is in the city limits of Frankfurt.
Correct.
Whereas in electric, roughly half our customers are in the city of Frankfurt, and half our customers are in either the county or adjoining counties, much more broad than the city itself, and, and so to serve those ratepayers properly, Facebook might be the best way to do that. So I'm kind of expanding on Mike's, Mike's message. We're basically doing, you might have read the book that came out 20 years ago, reengineering the organization, we're really trying to throw all this up in the air and sort it out when it comes down, and be intentional about how we rearrange it all to have a better layout and better look and feel to serve our ratepayers. And you want to add to that, Todd?
Yeah, I mean, I personally, I'm not a Facebook fan at all, but it is what it is, it's today's world. But if we were going to do this, and if each department did, had their own Facebook page, I would, I would want to be the one that was in charge of those, you know, like the other day with, with Phil's crew out on, on the accident with the pole, I could report. Fortunately, we only, we only had one house out, and it was right in front of the house, so they, they, they knew what was going on, but I could post pictures, report it, or if it's a big storm or whatever, and I could do the same with, with wastewater, could do the same with water. But, you know, that's one of the ways I would see it without having multiple people in there, without having multiple people sign the, the documents that Alicia sent on July 8th and stuff like that, but I'll do whatever anybody wants, but ultimately, I'm just not a Facebook fan, but I, I will do it to get the information out. It saves me, it saves from calling Mike, calling Krista, calling anybody, trying to get stuff on there and working. Now, fortunately, I'm not like these guys, I do have the time to stop and post something. They don't, or, and make the phone calls, and a lot of times in a storm, it's making phone calls, if I'm going from point A to point B, so that Phil keeps me out of his hair is still what I go with. He doesn't want my help, he wants me out of his hair, but.
He shook his head yes.
So, so I, I think, I, I tend to agree with you, Todd, I, I think it gets back to what we, we might call care, cussing, and control. If you're the authorized responsible party that does the posting, then you're accountable for the content.
Correct.
We don't have various and sundry people doing that for us, such as the city employee or whomever. The other thing I'd say is, this is for board discussion informally, to give the board an update, there's been no decisions made, certainly Mike and I don't make decisions about the rest of the board, Todd and I don't make decisions about the rest of the board, but we'll come back to the board with a more structured update, we're working on it, we have some thoughts in mind, and we can discuss those thoughts at the appropriate time in a future meeting. It's going to take some work, and so don't expect it in the month of August. We, we will, I won't predict when we'll have it done, but we're working on it, and if you have any questions or thoughts, you know, feel free to chime in, but that's, as an update, that's where we're at, is that fair? Okay.
Let's talk about the Employee Appreciation Day. I went to the Parks Department I went to the, uh, Parks Department to see when I could get, when would be the first available Friday, uh, for us to use the Prairie Creek Park. It happens to be September twenty-sixth. Um, and so I had them pencil us in there to be, be there that day for that event. Um, I have the application. I'll turn that in once we approve that as the date. The other thing I did was I thought about, I talked about catering. We had, uh, C N R last time. I believe, uh, we also, and then, uh, one, another caterer that come in highly recommended me was On-the-Go Catering. Uh, it actually works out of Mechanicsburg. Um, and, uh, I did make a contact with them, and they're more than willing, they're available to, uh, do that date. So, uh, I'm, I'm gonna ask the board to, uh, allow me to make a motion that we established August, or September twenty-sixth as the, uh, Employee Appreciation Day, and that we use, uh, On-the-Go Catering.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second it. Then the time would be?
Well, we would work on that, but last time, I think we had it from like noon to one-thirty or something like that.
One and thirty-one?
No, I think we went a little bit later. I think we, we actually, I think it was one.
Yeah.
We started at one, and then we let everybody go. We, we let the billing office stay up at one through people's lunches, you know, that maybe coming in paying their bill, and then we had this from everybody's home for the day.
The time would be established, but it would be.
To be determined.
Okay, confirmed. Any other questions? Go.
I don't, I don't think as president you can make a motion. According to Robert's rules. So, I'll make the motion to approve, approve the Employee Appreciation Party. And you're welcome.
And I'll still second that, Josh.
Yep, and use the over, over the top, on the go, on the go.
On the go. It's pretty good. It's pretty good.
All right, Josh makes the motion.
Gotcha. Ready?
Ready?
Did, did Mike second it?
Yes. He did.
Mike Reader did.
Mike Reader.
Krista Stilwell?
Aye.
Rick Gunyon?
Aye.
Josh Uetz?
Aye.
Mike Reader?
Aye.
Mike Kelly?
Aye.
All right, next item. Now, there was mention of the budget. You, uh, you did get the, to, uh, see the budget, uh, did, did everybody's, uh, SharePoint thing work?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Perfect, that's great.
Uh, and we're prepared to bring that budget up and look at it if anyone has questions about it that they want to, to, uh, have more information on.
I don't personally have any, I'll just start, start it here. I don't personally have any questions on it. Um, it was right in line with where it should be. Everything was well explained. Um, you know, I've seen a lot of budgets, and that's as good as one that I've, I've seen, so.
Did you get the original one, Josh?
I did, yes. Andrew got me all that stuff right away.
Thank you.
Yep.
If not, I was gonna give you a copy.
Everybody else okay?
Oh, I'm fine.
Rick, you?
Uh, I have no, uh, questions at this point, no. I did review it, had no questions. Nor, nor is there any, any change indicated from our budget plan. I, I think we're fine where we are, so, I'll add that.
We're, we're gonna leave the employee handbook and the, uh, still to be worked on stuff. And I, I do want to make a liaison change. I, uh, and I went ahead and did this. Um, I don't want to say that being the chairman takes a lot of time, but it does take some time. And, uh, it kind of wasn't, I wasn't able to give the time to I T that I felt necessary. So, I asked Rick if he would step into that role for me. I just want you to know that I'd made that change, uh, just, uh, this last couple, last week or so. And we talked a little bit about website, and, and it's gonna be, it'll be moved down to the, stay in the discussion only here for a while, but, uh, that, probably go down even to the, uh, holdover items. But, uh, and hold item, over items is gonna get larger, but eventually, we're gonna get some of these crossed off there. But we don't want to lose track of what we've been, what we're trying to do, so that's why they go to holdover items.
Yeah, the, the five thousand dollar supplement to the lagoons can come off.
Will come off, yes. It was requested to come off.
Was the budget review on there too?
It was on the.
New business?
The.
Unfinished business.
Unfinished.
Okay.
Okay, uh, anything for the good of the, the board that we need to, that we need to talk about? Anything we need to put in the, uh, new business discussion, things to look at in the future?
Um, I have one item, Mike. Um, so, with, uh, with Josh being a new, a new board member, Krista being a relatively new board member, could you clarify, maybe in the next meeting, the liaison assignments for each department? I, I'd sent you an email a month or so ago, listing departments and other, uh, duties. Uh, and there's quite a list of groups. Could you maybe in the next meeting clarify who does what to whom?
Uh, yeah, I'll have that available for the next meeting, but I will also send you an email, send an email out to the board with those assignments on there that, uh, currently, as they are with the one change.
I think it'd be good to clarify that for the remainder of the year, so everyone's.
Yeah.
On the same page. Thank you.
All right, anything else?
As far as like new, items for new business or new topics? Is that what you're asking for, for next meeting? Um, payment in lieu of tax. I'd like to talk about that. Yes.
And? What? Discussion of, of that amount, or?
Um, just discussion of the concept in general.
Good.
And I think the, the document that sets that, I'll have to go back and look again. I can't speak to it with any certainty, but I think it's fairly dated. At least the one that I saw.
There was one that was done within the last five years.
Yes.
I want to say.
Yeah.
But I don't know that there's been one.
I want to say it was like nineteen or twenty.
Yeah. It's five or six years, I think, is the last time that anything was done.
Might be a good time, a good, good time to look at it before we get asked.
A new year's coming before we know it.
Correct. I'm thinking there's one newer than that, because we increased it this year.
Correct.
For twenty-twenty-five, so we would have had to take something to the council to increase that.
I think that was done last year.
Yeah, it was done late in twenty-four, I believe, last year.
Did we have a document to that effect though?
I, I believe so.
So, there may be one.
Yeah.
Okay, it may not, just not.
Yeah, but it would have just been changed in the dollar amount. But I don't know about the, not, there was nothing in the verbiage change.
Look at what I've got.
Yeah, Alicia, could you then send that out to us? Because I think if it was late in twenty-four, it might have still been done before, because I joined the board in November, and I don't, I don't remember that happening since I've been on the board, so.
It was prior to the budgets.
Okay, so that.
So, it would have been.
In the hearing.
Yeah, so it would have been fall.
It would have been September, October. So, like, right before I came on board, okay.
Correct.
Yeah, because none of this is sounding familiar at all.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember if it got changed, or if there was just an increase built in. I'll have to look. Okay. Mm-hmm, thank you.
And Alicia, could you help me, um, what we would be looking for would be a board resolution that passed by majority vote regarding that amount. Is that correct?
Um, we either have a board resolution, or we have an agreement with the city. I can't remember which one we did. If we did an agreement with the city that said, we're going to pay this, and we had both parts, both sides sign that, or if we had a board resolution saying what it was. There was some documentation though, because previous to my involvement, uh, as attorney, we had no documentation, and we wanted to change that. So, we did document it, which is a step in the right direction. So, there is a paper somewhere. I don't remember if it's a resolution or if it's an agreement, but I will look, and I will send whatever I've got.
I think, I think it might be both.
It may be both. I don't know. We like paper, so.
I think, I think the board resolved to do it, and then entered into an agreement with the city.
Yeah, yeah, I can't remember offhand, but.
That could be.
Yeah. I'll, I'll look.
It should be documented in the minutes, so I'll look through there and give you the paper.
Okay, yeah, I should be able to just search for pilot and find out on my computer. But, because it would have been, if it's done since I was here, I can, I can find it, but.
I have one open question, Mike.
Okay.
For Alicia primarily, um, now that we're into August, are there any, have, have you had a chance to look, and are there any, uh, approved legislative actions by the state legislature that impact this board for this year?
There are some. Um, I haven't finished the entire review yet, but there are some that will impact this board, yes. Um, I don't know that there are any that are, um, like, on fire. Um, but there are some that will, and I am going to do my very best to get that before the next board meeting out to you all. I'm almost done with it, but I didn't have it all the way finished, and I wanted to finish it up.
Okay, well, the last part of that was kind of what I was asking about, was when you might expect an update. So, that's good.
Yep.
That's good. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? I, I knew, I, we've talked about, if you look in the holdover items on the funding for Prairie Creek watershed, um, one of the things is, uh, oh, they're, he's fairly busy right now, so we've asked, uh, put that ahead, uh, when he, uh, try to think of his name now.
Dan.
Dan Sheets.
Daniel J. Sheets. Dan J.
Dan Sheet, I knew that. Um, when he can be here to, to, uh, help us understand that. If nothing else, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So, moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.